August 11th, 2025, Bayport City Council Meeting. Why do I hear myself echoing?
Beating back to her, please.
Harrison?
That is still happening.
It's because the TV speakers are on because that's how we end up hearing the remote.
Oh, because of when we were doing Zooms or something, we had them on?
We just have to mute it now.
Okay.
Is there a different way you can do that?
Turn it off. All right.
Turn it down, too.
You guys heard it earlier.
Yeah, yeah.
Everyone's been hearing it. Okay.
All right.
Thank you. Yeah, that's better. Thank you. All right, let's all do the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Matt, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Dahl?
Here.
Councilmember Gilmar?
Here.
Councilmember Bliss?
Here.
Councilmember Hill?
Here.
Mayor Hanson?
Here.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the agenda for tonight?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Thanks, Katie. Second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Ethan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, there are no proclamations, et cetera. And I suppose there could be someone here. Is there anyone here for the open forum? Should I read the whole spiel or not? Okay, let's get that, too. And then the consent agenda. Consider a resolution adopting items 1 through 11. The July 14th City Council Workshop and Regular Meeting Minutes. The July Payables and Receipts. July Building Plumbing Mechanical and Zoning Permits Report. First Amendment to the Parking Lot Lease Agreement with Anderson Corporation for Use of the Lakeside Park Parking Lot. Authorization to Issue a Request for Proposals for Property Mitigation at 2 and 18 Point Road. Authorization to Hire Camera Heldman for the Position of Assistant Library Director, being Camera. Special Event Application from Woodfire Wellness to Operate a Seasonal Sauna Facility at Lakeside Park. Thanks for coming, guys. And Short Term Rental Exemption Request for 528 Sixth Street North. Service Agreement with David Drown Associates for a Pay Equity and Salary Compensation Study. Comprehensive Plan Amendment to Include the Bay Haven at Bayport Development within the Municipal Urban Service Area and Designate a Future Land Use of Low Density Residential and High Density Residential. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to adopt a resolution approving the consent agenda as presented.
Thanks, Carl.
Second.
Thank you, John. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Dahl?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmar?
Aye.
Councilmember Bliss?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Mayor Hanson?
Aye.
All right, and now we're going to have a presentation of the city audit. I believe it's online with Molly Thompson from Schlepper, Wetter &amp; Company.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me okay?
We can, yeah, thanks.
All right, wonderful. Well, first of all, thank you for allowing me to attend virtually. I had a little bit of a calendar conflict with the date change that I couldn't get moved around. So as I go through this, if there are questions, and maybe if someone can just let me know that as we go, and I can either address those on the slide we're on or wait till the end, whichever you prefer. All right, this first slide is just to kind of give a picture of the audit process. We have a planning phase, a fieldwork phase, and a wrap-up and write-up phase. And the general procedures listed here kind of show you what we do for the fieldwork phase, which is where we basically test the numbers. So once you provide us with a trial balance, we go through and do some detailed testing of original documents, analytical procedures, inquiries, and the like. We also review all of your minutes and contracts agreements. And we do all that work so that we can issue an opinion on the financial statements. And we issued an unmodified or clean opinion that they are fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Along with the audited financial statements, we also issue a report to the members of governance. And this is really our opportunity to let you know if there are any issues or concerns that we noted. The audit went smoothly again this year. We have a very positive working relationship with your management. No unusual transactions, policies, accounting treatments, et cetera. We are required to let you know that in, for our purposes, there is a significant estimate, and that relates to the net pension, asset liability for your proportionate share of para. So again, it isn't that it's significant maybe to you or the financial statements, but it is to us as the auditors. And then you did appropriately adopt GESB 101 this year pertaining to compensated absences. In terms of internal controls, we have the same findings that we've had for several years now. And these findings are very similar for all of our government client base. So there's nothing unusual with the findings and nothing unusual in the current year pertaining to the findings. So we do help with some adjustments from cash or modified accrual to accrual basis. And then you do have improper segregation of duties just because there's a lack of enough people there to spread the transactions out across a certain number of folks. And then we're also required to let you know that we do prepare the actual financial statements for you. As part of your audit each year, we're also required to look at your compliance with Minnesota statutes. So the OSA actually issues various checklists that we go through. And the areas that are reviewed include contracting and bidding, depositories of Public Funds, Conflicts of Interest, Public Indebtedness, Claims and Disbursements. And then they have a catch-all miscellaneous checklist. And we had no findings in this area. So again, a nice clean report. The next few slides I'm going to walk through all pertain to your general fund. And we'll spend the, most of the presentation on the numbers part on your general fund. Excuse me. So we have a five-year trend here. Revenues in blue, red is your expenditures, and then green is your fund balance. And fund balance represents at December 31st, if the doors were closed, what would be left over between assets, less all of the liabilities being paid off. So it really represents the health of the city. Current year, your revenues exceeded your budgeted revenues by about $425,000. And expenses exceeded your budgeted expenses by about $771,000. Your general fund had a loss this year of about $440,000. But you ended the year with fund balance of about $3.3 million. So again, a healthy number on the fund balance. The next couple of slides, we'll walk through the revenues and expenses. And I'll just kind of talk in general about the changes between this year and the year prior. So this is your revenue cycles. And again, we've got 2023 in the blue, 2024 in the red, and then your budget in the green for 2024. So taxes and assessments increased a bit this year due to a little bit of a levy increase, better collections. And then some assessments were levy-related to the Fourth Avenue Improvement Project. And then the next big bucket I'm going to talk about is intergovernmental. This went up largely due to an increase of about $134,000 in LGA. Charges for services relatively similar year-to-year. Investment gains were down a little bit compared to the prior year. Reason your budget is off in that area is you generally just budget conservatively for investment earnings. And then your miscellaneous, the increase there is just in general an increase in donations over the prior year. Okay, there we go. On to expenditures. General, you had a little bit of an uptick in this year's expenses largely due to election expenses. Public safety was pretty similar. Public works, you generally just had a decrease in several repairs and maintenance accounts over the prior year. Parks and Rec, pretty similar to the prior year. Capital increase, you had a big increase this year. Part of that was the fire tender purchase of about $687,000 and some street improvements of about $644,000. This slide is another indicator of the health of the city. So you have a policy in place that your fund balance, your unassigned fund balance should be approximately 40% of the annual budgeting operating expenditures. And you can see here over the five years, you've ranged from 73% up to 180%. So again, you've met that all five years. And your fund balance policy is in line with what the OSA recommends. Cash for the general fund over the five years here, we have a graph, but it increased $405,000 this year to $4.1 million at the end of the current year. Now I'm going to spend a little bit of time on your other governmental funds. You've got your Water and Sewer Improvement Fund, and then your other, what we call non-major, smaller funds. That includes your permanent fund, special revenue funds, library improvement fund, and then your debt service funds. So the Water and Sewer Improvement Fund had an increase in the current year of $174,000. And the non-major government funds had an increase of about $92,000. And both of these funds, again, they have a healthy fund balance of $2.4 million for the Water and Sewer Improvement Fund and $2.7 million for the non-major governmental funds. Ash in these two funds, your Water and Sewer Improvement Fund decreased about $486,000 to $1.7 million. And your non-major governmental funds decreased just slightly, about $16,000 to $2.4 million. Okay, the next few slides, I'm going to walk through the enterprise funds, which are your water and sewer funds. The first one here is your water fund. And you'll see that the green line represents your operating revenues versus the red line is your operating expenses. So you have operating income or loss this year of about $128,000 compared to about $30,000 the year prior. And then you do have some other revenues such as special assessments, connection fees, interest income, et cetera, that help fund this fund. But you did end the year with a loss of about $17,000 for the water fund. And again, you have a healthy ending net position or fund balance of $7 million. For the sewer funds, similar, you've got operating loss of about $130,000 this year compared to $115,000 the year prior. And then some add-backs, some other revenue for the same type of items, your special assessments and interest income and the like. So you had a net loss of $76,000, and you have an ending net position of $3.2 million. Keep in mind for these funds, these do include depreciation, which is a non-cash expense. So that's part of what is driving the loss in these funds. And then just a cash trend analysis. Your water fund ended the year $115,000 higher than the prior year. So ending cash was $2.7 million. And sewer was down about $196,000 for an ending balance of $1.4 million. The next two slides, take a peek at your total assets and total liabilities for the entire city. So this is all of your government funds that we just talked about, plus all of the enterprise funds. And your blue bars represent your current assets, which are largely cash and receivables. And then the red bars represent your capital or non-current assets, which is all of the equipment, infrastructure, and the like. So in total, this year, you had an increase in total assets of about $800,000, meaning that you ended the year at $46.3 million compared to $45.5 million the year prior. Meanwhile, total liabilities, you ended the year at $3.8 million this year compared to $4.1 million last year. So a decrease of about $300,000. So the net change citywide is a positive change of about $500,000 in your fund balance. Then I've got two slides here that just show your outstanding debt. You've got some outstanding debt on the governmental funds that come due in 2032. You can see here, the blue just represents the principal payments that'll be due, and the red represents the interest. And then similarly, on the enterprise funds, you've got debt outstanding that will be due in 2031. And again, you've got your blue represents principal versus red is your interest payments. Other than that, I want to thank Matt and Lucas for another good audit season. Everything's filed and complete with the OSA. So you're good to go for another year. I appreciate all the hard work they do.
All right. Thank you, Molly, and thank you, Lucas and Matt. I know a lot of work goes into this. There are, I mean, there's some charts that don't look real great, but I know we're making changes. This was 2024, and there are things that we became more aware of and made more, some changes now for 2025 and 2026. We will do, adjust even further. Just the discovery of not having actual separate accounts that we thought we were pulling from for some capital improvement projects. And it was all coming out of the general fund. And so we're making adjustments. And I think in the end, it all comes out. Like you said, we're half a million ahead in the fund balance. So that's the good part of that story. It's just some of these charts don't look like they're, we're sitting too great. But in the end, we really were doing okay, so.
Yep. And I think, too, like I said, you always have to keep in mind with those water and sewer funds, that those do include some pretty significant depreciation numbers. So just so everyone in the room understands what that means is you might have improvements that are 10 years old, and you're only expensing those over, you know, 20 years versus upfront in the year of purchase. So it's a non-cash expense, just like a business would have depreciation. So those are some pretty big numbers that impact those enterprise funds in a different way than your governmental funds.
And we're also, we created the new funding mechanism for those. Correct, Matt? So we should be able to start putting more into those funds based on the, at least the, we haven't implemented the water one, right?
Yeah, so Molly, the mayor's talking about, we've re-implemented what would be like equipment replacement funds and different items like that. So for 2025, we're putting money specifically into those rather than spending down the general fund on purchases such as.
Exactly.
Yeah. And I was actually referring to the fees that we'll be gathering now, too, to help supplement those?
Oh, yeah. For 2025, also Molly, we'll have a stormwater fund, enterprise fund, that will be added to the list, so.
Perfect. Perfect. Yep, that makes a lot of sense to me.
Okay. Just to make sure I'm reading this right, too. So when I see expenses outpacing revenue consistently and a decreasing fund balance, that's more indicative of trying to get that fund balance to a more appropriate level? Is that?
I don't think it was intentional. No. But it was doing that. Yes.
Yeah, Commissioner Bliss, it's probably more of an explanation outside of this realm. But really, what was happening is we had a very big fund balance, right? At one time in 2020. And instead of, we used some of that fund balance essentially to keep taxes lower. So that's the gist of it there. And once you start using that over and over again, obviously, it gets down to a level we are now. It's still not a level of technical concern because our policy says 40%, right?
And we're at 70 or 80.
We're at 73%. But if you would keep doing that over time, that becomes a problem. Eventually, you'll run out of a fund balance. So the intent now would be to make sure our improvement funds are funded. And when we're budgeting, bring money from the improvement funds into our general fund to pay for those capital improvements in any given year rather than spend down the general fund.
Thanks.
Correct.
Good question. Does anyone else have any questions or comments about the audit? And we could have a motion to accept it, then, I guess?
I move to accept the 2024 audit as presented.
Second.
All right. Thank you, Katie and John. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? All right. Thanks for your time, Molly.
Thank you, Molly.
Appreciate it. Sorry, we moved the meeting on, yeah?
Yep.
But glad you could still make it. All right. Thanks. We have, next on the agenda is public hearings. And we have no public hearings or unfinished business. So we're going to move on to new business. And we have Dan Licht here from The Planning Company, our consultant for planning. And he is going to tell us all about the resolution for planned unit development for Bay Haven at Bayport for the multifamily rental units. That's been submitted by At Home Apartments.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, if we can switch to the slide projector. So this application has been submitted by At Home Apartments for Lot 1, Block 5, within the Bay Haven at Bayport Development. The preliminary plat and PUD zoning district for that development was approved back in February. They'd included specific parameters for development of this lot, required the developer to submit their own PUD development plan for the site. It also requires, obviously, that the developer of Bay Haven proceed with a final plat so that there is a lot to develop. Specific to this site, the Conference of Plan guides the property for high-density residential use. That's based on the resolution passed as part of the consent agenda. As I said, it's owned PUD district with uses allowing townhouse or multiple-family dwelling units, minimum of 30 and up to 70 units in order to comply with the density needs of the overall development. Surrounding the property is the ISD 834 Elementary School to the northeast, Berkers Alps Park to the east and southeast. You have Inspiration to the south and then west. And basically centered in the development are all the single-family homes as part of the Bay Haven at Bayport Development. The building plans are representative of what Pratt Construction initially showed back in February for their intended use of this site. They worked with the architect, who also works with At Home Apartments, to further develop the proposed development of the building. It has 70 units. It's a height of four stories or 37 feet, which is slightly above what was initially discussed. And we can touch on that in a moment. But the exterior features durable, sustainable finishes, including brick or stone and horizontal lap side. There's a variety of materials. There's a variety of setbacks and emphasis throughout the structure. So it minimizes its overall scale as part of the project and would be consistent with the character of the single-family home surrounding it. The preliminary layout of the building has 51% one-bedroom units. All of these units exceed the minimum floor area for apartments required by the zoning ordinance. So the fourth story that's proposed by At Home Apartments is essentially an amenity deck on the southeast side of the building, or east side of the building. It provides opportunity for view of the St. Croix River Valley from the elevation. And there was perspective drawings included in the packet to show the visibility corridors that's created by this space. It also includes a room available for community or resident uses within the building, basically the party room or gathering space. But what the architect has done is basically tucked this space into what was already designed as the pitch roof. So if you look at the original plans compared to what's proposed now, it's not evident that there's a fourth story. The developer also had perspective showing the view of the building surrounding, from the surrounding sidewalks. And it's not evident that this fourth story is up there. So it maintains the overall scale of the building while providing an important amenity the developer feels is necessary for the project.
So Dan, I wasn't sure how to interpret those, where it said like the 30-foot trees were blocking the view? Does that mean that there is a view of the river from the roof?
We can let the developer explain the views that they're after. But there would be a view towards the river. Depending on where the roof deck was placed, there would be trees. But this does afford those opportunities.
Okay, thanks.
So in terms of the site plan, again, Pratt Construction had really done a thorough job at the preliminary plat stage, laying this out, having engaged the architect. So there isn't a lot of change from that initial concept to this. All the lot requirements and setbacks are consistent with the preliminary plat design of the project in terms of what was established for those parameters. They provided a landscape plan. And as part of their PUD permit, it includes minimization of irrigation and water use for the site, making it more sustainable and putting less burden on the city's utility facilities. One of the things discussed in the report is the parking requirements for the development. Bayport zoning ordinance is a bit outdated in that it requires two stalls per dwelling unit. As apartments have grown in popularity, there's been much more study of the parking needs for these types of land uses. The developer has also experienced in operating multiple-family dwellings. So they provided background information on their own projects. City staff used data from Institute of Transportation Engineers, where they go out and do actual studies for parking demand for various land uses to basically check what the developer was showing as their estimated parking demand. Based on that, city staff is comfortable with the 120 parking stalls available on the site. Plus, there are additional nine stalls adjacent on the street that would be intended for short-term parking, delivery vehicles primarily. But there would be a park. a parking restriction placed on those so there's no overnight parking uh in those locations to keep them available. Uh the site is well connected as part of the overall pedestrian uh flow through the development with sidewalks surrounding the entire building and the trail that goes from Stagecoach all the way through to Barker's Alps Park uh providing connectivity. Uh we can discuss the trail more as part of the Bay Haven final plat but uh the basic parameters is that infrastructure will be in place for this project. Uh the engineering uh staff has provided a review of the project as they're reviewing the final construction plans. Uh there are a number of items that still need correction uh but that's typical of this process where you're finalizing everything down to the final details is making adjustments uh basically as you go so as we phrase the resolution and the conditions for approval any engineering item pertaining to grading stormwater utilities uh streets, parking areas etc. is still subject to the city engineer's review to make sure that checklist outlined in their memorandum is covered and also if there's any adjustment to it for example if the retaining wall is taken out of the plan then what does the grading plan look like. Um so there is some flexibility on the part of the engineer to review and ensure that everything is done according to specifications. City staff's recommendation is that the proposed development is consistent with what uh the city council anticipated development of the site would be back from February so we are recommending approval of the PUD general development plan and the PUD permit. City attorney's office has also drafted a site improvement agreement that the developer would execute to ensure completion of the project in accordance with the city council's stipulations as outlined from the August sixth planning report and included in the resolution for council consideration. And there is a representative of At Home Apartments here if you have any questions or comments we'd like to hear from them as well.
Okay thank you Dan. Um I don't know when the right time is to bring up the questions that I have about um like the the map labeling on this one is different than the labeling when we get to like the street names are different when we get to the other one. I kinda wanna talk about the street names a little bit too and when I should bring that up um but otherwise I don't know that I had any. Does anyone have specific questions for?
I would like um so on basically any of the maps on that map there top center circular center left a little bit that's circular um right there Dan.
That.
What what's exactly happening there?
Retaining wall.
How big of a retaining wall?
Yep that's a retaining wall for a stormwater basin.
Nine feet?
Yep.
And okay and it appears like there might be like some sort of fence or guardrail that goes around that I mean so somebody's yard people's yards are gonna back up to a nine-foot drop-off.
Correct so there is a fence placed at the top for any retaining wall over four feet.
Okay.
But it is it that stormwater basin and that retaining wall are actually in the outlot that's owned by the homeowners association so it's not in anyone's personal yard.
Okay do you have concerns about that or you just kinda wanted to point it out?
Kids climb fences you know stuff happens.
Yeah.
It's really close to those residences.
Yeah I'm guessing there isn't an alternative or they would have done something different for Odie could address that but as part of it it has to do with the topography of the site and the need to provide for stormwater management throughout. And so there is some kind of a retention pond right there on that corner where that one.
Correct.
Yeah Mayor there are there are it's a two-cell system and um you know of course the developers here they're they're intimately familiar with the details but the one particular one that you're looking at there there are two cells uh one on essentially the south side of the retaining wall and the other to the north.
How do they operate I mean in a in a nutshell I mean is there expected to be water in one and one's dry or does one flow to the other one or how can you give us a brief?
Right yeah generally speaking um they are interconnected and um you know again with the developer here they may be better suited to speak but uh one is generally gonna have a um you know uh on normal in a normal normal precipitation year you would expect to see some water in it most of the time if not all of the time. Um and the other one would be more of an infiltration practice that would be expected to dry out in in drier periods. And they are interconnected they work together.
But yeah that's that's good enough. Yeah I I guess just for me that stood out as I'm on my safety committee at work as a as a pretty low-hanging fruit from a safety standpoint.
I guess I'm curious about like so that retaining wall.
Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
Chime in in a second. So it in the interest of keeping these two things separate.
Is that more for the other development?
It is more for the other portion yes.
Okay.
So your question about the trees and being able to see that their thirty-foot thing that's definitely.
We could ask that now but okay.
Yep and if you have any questions specific to essentially the apartments.
Okay.
That's that's what I would be asking now.
I know and that's why it was so hard that this came first because I think we all wanna talk about the picture first you know but it's not that order on our agenda so okay um so hold that thought I'm curious about I don't wanna forget about the oh how that looks. So do you wanna let us know you'll have to come up here so everyone can hear you that's watching or will watch online as well so and introduce yourself please. Just one at a time.
I missed the sub last.
It'll come.
Okay great uh good evening um Mayor Hanson members of the council my name is Leanne Stefaniak I am president of real estate and development for At Home Apartments. I also serve as our company's general counsel. Um we're pleased to be here tonight um being a part of this project and being the uh the apartment partner for Bay Haven at Bayport is very exciting for us. Um when the project was brought to us earlier this year we knew we were the right developer for this. Um our company was founded over thirty years ago um by Mike Ashley and Alan Spalding what started as two guys buying brownstone out of college has grown into a company that has over five thousand units throughout the Twin Cities metro area. We employ over a hundred people we're based in St. Paul. We are a true local operator and developer. Um we we view ourselves as operator first developer second and what I mean by that is that we're not a fly-by-night developer we're not just gonna build this and then leave the community. Um we are here to stay we wanna be partners and stakeholders with the residents of Bayport. Um and so we're just very excited that we get to be the ones to partner with Mr. Pratt and his team to complete the whole picture. Um to your question about the views so the reason why um when we first saw this project back in February Pete Keely who presented the apartment concept to you all he's been a partner of ours for almost as long as our company has been around and all the communities that we have developed throughout the Twin Cities have been done in partnership with Pete Keely so we knew that when we saw it it was eighty-five percent complete. Um we just knew from an operation standpoint there were some enhancements that we needed to make. One of that was where is this where's the gathering space where are we gonna create a sense of community within this project. Um and knowing that we wanted to you know keep it seventy units to make the co- uh the project economically feasible um we needed to be sensitive to the massing and what the villa homeowners were going to see and so working with Pete we decided that we needed to put the community space um integrated into the roof line and part of that vision for us too is here's the community space here's where people are gonna gather and have you know a glass of wine at night a dinner party uh you know book reading whatever the event might be but we also wanted to see the river and have viewpoints of the river valley right we're we're in Bayport it's gorgeous it's right along the river we should enhance that for our residents coming in as well. So without that fourth floor amenity deck being built into the roof line the third floor units where all the housing is and below you're not going to see anything from your units because of where the trees are and so that's what that graph is trying to show you that okay well if the tree is thirty feet tall and you're looking out this window you're not gonna see anything but if you can go up to the fourth floor amenity deck well now you're gonna have partial views of the river you'll have full views of the river valley it's not gonna be a hundred percent you can see the river every day of the week.
Yes.
It's not possible but it does allow our residents to really enjoy it you know the community and the environment which um you know supports the aesthetic of the project.
Okay that's great I'm glad you were able to incorporate that outdoor space I think that will be a nice addition.
And keep the trees.
And keep the trees yes because it's nice looking trees too you're for some reason it's no longer showing on your screen but um okay thanks for explaining that and it looks like there's also like a a terrace like that other area that's on the ground level for outdoor space right I assume that's what that terrace area is.
Are you talking about where the um.
On the first floor the first level plan there's a terrace.
Yes so that is this open terrace the parking that'll be over the underground parking so that's just the it'll be a pervious surface we will have drains to make sure that there's no water issues and runoff happening but um that will be just an open gathering space on the first level for you know kids to play animals and what have you.
Okay.
But it'll be on top of the underground parking deck.
Gotcha and there are also commons areas on that first level for other community space so okay I think it looks really beautiful I like the you kept the multi-level look from the outside instead of it just being a big box um I I'm glad we're looking at you know minimal grassy area for maintenance and all of that so I don't really have any ideas for it or anything I think it looks good and I I totally am on board with it not we we don't need two spaces per unit I mean every all the numbers you showed us make perfect sense to me in the way you know that they're not all two bedrooms or more that kinda thing so I think it um it all makes sense to me does anyone have concerns about this specifically while we have her here?
No not really I mean I'm sure it's you know gonna be a highly desirable um structure for people that reside in.
Yeah has a lot of variety of um sizes of of the apartments and and I love that you guys have a longstanding history and you have other apartments that you're already doing and that you'll be here and you're locals so um I know sometimes those parking garages can get a little tight though too so do you we need this many parking spots for sure like are you are you good with it do you feel like.
Yeah I think we are good with it. The building footprint is the building footprint we didn't mess with that especially this late in the you know game after you know John and and the Pratt um group have already worked out a lot of the engineering and grading you know sensitivities for the site so keeping the building footprint as is um you know the data that I provided in our packet uh it provides a one point seven parking ratio and that does allow for some two-car households or people that may have a car plus a motorcycle. Um so we do think that it at one point seven there's extra spaces that can be utilized by families that do have one or more car or you know more than one car um but it's not overparked in any way.
Okay. Sounds good.
And there'll be some other things integrated into that garage space like storage and areas for residents to keep you know belongings that aren't you know too big for the apartment or what have you so it's not just all parking there will be some storage units in there as well.
Mm-hmm. Great. I guess we're good.
Great.
Yeah thanks thanks for coming and answering some questions. Right so what else do we have to do for this part of it is that it are we ready to go ahead and adopt a resolution or what else?
You can make a motion you can make a motion for that.
Anybody?
I'll do this one. Um I'll move to adopt a resolution approving a planned unit development plan for Bay Haven at Bayport development for seventy multifamily rental units submitted by At Home Apartments. Subject to the conditions listed in the staff report and authorizing staff to work with the city attorney to finalize the PUD permit and site improvement agreement.
Thanks John.
Second.
Thanks Carl. Rule call.
Councilmember Dahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore.
Aye.
Councilmember Bliss.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Mayor Hanson.
Aye. Awesome. Okay now let's move on to the final plat for Bay Haven at Bayport. This is gonna include new construction of thirty single-family villa lots and the one lot for multi-family use that we just talked about so it's all gonna be incorporated into one and Dan's here to talk about that.
Harrison can our screens here are dead can we get these going again so we can.
Oh weird.
See the presenters.
That one's working.
Yours is kaput.
Yeah mine's not.
Black.
Yeah.
We kick something down here.
I don't know.
Otherwise.
I mean I have my laptop so I'm fine.
Yeah it just.
Mine has the HDMI thing floating and that one's.
There's is working our two are goners but well let's continue and then if you can do something.
And you have your laptop we all have something to look at here. Good that you guys have yours because you don't have your laptop so we're good. Go ahead Dan.
Thank you Mayor. Um so this is the big picture uh this is the actual subdivision of the property based on the preliminary plat that was approved back in February as the mayor said it's thirty-five single-family lots and the one lot for the multiple family development. Uh there's also the outlot that includes all the open space at the perimeter of the development. Uh the comprehensive plan guides the property for low-density and high-density uh residential uses based on the resolution included in the uh consent agenda this evening. Uh the zoning is PUD district allowing the single-family villas and the one multiple-family lot uh same general area as discussed with the prior application. Uh the final plat basically what you're looking for here is that it looks just like the preliminary plat that was approved in February uh which this does in terms of the lot requirements. Uh each of the lots has sufficient area within required setbacks to provide for construction of the single-family villa home. Uh they're also dedicating the right-of-way for all the streets to be constructed within the development including uh the extension of First Avenue North coming off of Stagecoach Trail. And those are being done in a in accordance with the city's specifications in the subdivision ordinance with some flexibility on the right-of-way width uh that was approved with the preliminary plat to basically move the homes closer in and preserve more trees and uh topography at the perimeter of the development. Uh pedestrians are accommodated with sidewalks on one side of uh the public streets. There's also the trail that will be constructed by the developer from Stagecoach Trail through the development all the way through to Barker's Alps Park. Uh there's some hoops to jump through with that including acquiring property that's identified as a gap in the titles between uh this property the other properties within Baytown Township and uh the Inspiration Outlot to the south of that. Uh basically once that gap is acquired that will provide the corridor for completion of that trail by the developer through. Uh engineering again has been reviewed by the city engineer uh and their comments are included in your packet and will be addressed pursuant to the uh comments and conditions as part of the resolution. Outlot A is again the open space uh that's to be owned by the homeowners association but it is overlaid by drainage and utility easements so that it can't be further developed or subdivided basically preserved as it is uh in perpetuity. Uh with park dedication uh the developer would be required to provide a cash fee in lieu of land as they're not dedicating land to the city for park purposes uh but they've asked for and it's outlined in the development agreement that they would receive credit for the quiet title action unnecessary to acquire the gap parcel and then construction of the trail against those park dedication fees. The uh multiple-family unit on lot one block five will still pay the per-unit uh park dedication fee at time of building permit. Uh so the city's getting a mix of uh improvements as well as cash for park dedication requirements. Uh they do need to provide documents uh for the city attorney's review establishing that homeowners association uh managing the open space and the other elements common within the development uh but that's all outlined as part of the development agreement which the city attorney's office has drafted. Uh there's been extensive work between Pratt Construction and city staff on working through the terms of that development agreement uh given there's a number of unique elements including the gap parcel there's the uh irrigation measures a number of items uh that were addressed both in the development agreement as well as the PUD permit. Uh basically the development's consistent with what was approved by the city council back in February uh so city staff does recommend approval of the final plat the PUD permit and execution of the development agreement. And that would be subject to twenty-one conditions as outlined in the planning report from August sixth.
Okay twenty-one conditions.
Twenty-one. Mayor I would note that's down from the number from the preliminary.
I know.
There's a lot of underlining in there too um and the memorandum from SEH so there's just a lot of details obviously and. Um, memorandum from SEH, so there's just a lot of details, obviously, in any kind of a development like this. And a lot, unfortunately, still, it seems like a little loose ends, but we trust our engineer to look through all of that and make sure everything's good to go. Um, like I said earlier, one of the questions I had was the, the street names. I mean, even if you just look at the At Homes, um, map, C201, the site plan, street names back then, Kohler Way went north and south and then it was Bay Haven Trail and it ran into First Avenue North, which comes off of Stagecoach. So it looks like Kohler, Kohler got changed to the, it was too switched. So now it's Bay Haven Way and Kohler Trail. Um, fine with me, but I do have a little bit of a concern about First Avenue North as a name. Only, I mean, there's a couple of reasons. I think it's going to be confusing, 'cause it's gonna sound like it's downtown in the old part of Bayport. Um, we didn't do that anywhere in Inspiration. We don't like say, oh, this one would have hooked up to second, so let's call this one second. So I, I kind of would like some discussion about whether we could call this whole loop Kohler or if we wanna call something Bay Haven and something, I don't know. But like Kohler Trail North and Kohler Trail South, would that work? 'Cause I feel like that, so that apartment building, all their addresses are gonna be First Avenue North, right? 'Cause that's where it faces. I feel like that just doesn't seem right for this development, but that, does anyone else have a?
I do like the named connection to the rest of Bayport, or at least the hint of that.
Okay. I thought as the, and it's actually the entrance to the development is called First Avenue North, it just, just didn't feel right to me. I'm just, am I being too picky, but it's just like forever changing, like if you name it, it's gonna be named it. Because we, I recommended that?
One grid.
Oh, yeah, well, now it doesn't look right. Sorry if I made you do that.
So I did talk to it.
Maybe staff did, maybe it wasn't me, I don't remember.
With Chief Jackson, and we haven't touched base with, uh, Chief Isinger yet, but there probably will be a discussion on the naming, and the county should probably get involved. Um, just so that they're in agreeance with, uh, for emergency calls and different things like that, they can take a look at.
Mm-hmm.
For instance, that First Avenue North portion, is there discrepancy there between what's downtown? Um, Chief Jackson had named a couple of different things where stuff has been changed over the year, past couple of years to, um, make accommodations so it's less confusing to, um, public safety, so.
Yeah, 'cause how would the numbering system work then? Like, what would the apartment complex address number be for First Avenue North, like?
Number one. I, I don't know, I'm just kidding.
Well, I'm just saying, like, it could get even more complicated if we have those same numbers on First Avenue on the other side.
Be higher.
Yeah, you'd think it would be high, like, these would be starting maybe with the nine, maybe even higher than nine.
I don't, that discussion is beyond, I think, our discussion here, I think.
Well, I think it's important, though, and we are the ones who have to approve the names of the streets. It said that somewhere in all this that I read.
And I agree about that too, I think, go ahead, Dan.
Mayor, the ninth condition of approval is that the, uh, street names are subject to city approval, uh, so they can be changed.
Okay.
I think the direction is clear, uh, from at least emergency services and the mayor that, uh, that First Avenue North needs to be revisited, so.
Okay, great.
Not even that, I mean, I feel like even delivery people get confused with Fifth Avenue North and Fifth Avenue South.
Yeah, it happens now, it's gonna make it, yeah, it's gonna make it even worse. So, okay, they understand our concern, which is good.
As long as we have.
And, and we are for sure spelling Kohler right, 'cause I know Connie thought it had an H in it and I just wanna make sure it is a 2L Kohler, we double-checked before we name a street after them, okay.
Think it's two Ls.
It was in the, okay, I, I just wanna make sure. All right, um, the retaining wall question that John had brought up, um, do you have more? I have a question about it too, if you want.
Well, just, I mean.
Explain a little.
Life's dangerous enough without human-made things like that. To, to me, I'm sure it's gonna be a four-foot fence and that's a 13-foot fall.
Yeah, can you explain that, is it actually like?
It is very close.
Is it like?
And I understand the need for retention ponds, all that stuff, I don't need that stuff. I don't question that stuff, I just question having something that, that I would consider if I'm a family there, that, that backs up to my yard, that's not very far away from my house. And kids getting away and going over that fence and not knowing better and having a hell of a bad injury.
Can someone give us a better idea of what that really is gonna look like? And even out, so if someone's looking out of the back of their house there, are they seeing a wall or is the wall built into the cliff?
It's going down.
Yeah, I would think it would go down too. Yeah. And so how do we address John's concern, and I guess I have the same concern now that you've brought it up, of the danger of this tall wall right outside someone's house?
Uh, Dwayne Sikich, working with Lynn Pratt. Uh, so those ponds were laid out very, very early on the project. Now, if you remember, the previous developer had laid out ponding in that similar area, but ended up getting pushed over the hill and taking out about two acres of trees and chasing that slope down the hill. So when we laid this out, we decided to do that two-tier vertical system so that, um, we could get, meet the, the stormwater requirements, but yet not be chasing and cutting down trees down the slope. So it actually, we've been, at one point, the wall was even higher, we've adjusted as we've refined. And it may be kind of bizarre, but if you cross the street and go to the, the other side, part of the reason for that wall height is based on westerly homes, 'cause that, that also is sitting up. You following me? If you go to Lot 11 and 10, 11, 12 over there in Block 1, that also resides the.
10, 11, and 12.
Over on the left-hand side, as you're looking at the plan.
Mm-hmm.
So all of those grades step down.
Sure.
So that's kind of, it's not, not just thrown in there and, and guessed, it's obviously, it, it all works together.
Well, no, I'm not, I'm, I'm certainly not suggesting that it wasn't engineered properly or anything, anything like that. I'm, I'm just saying, I'm just making, I'm just making, I, I want clarity for people in knowing what we're getting into here and, um, in the, in the town, and I'm, I'm not suggesting anybody's doing anything inappropriate. And it's just sort of a, that, that's a hazardous situation, in my opinion.
So one of the conditions is clarifying the fence. There is a detail at the back of the engineering plans. So this will be a, a 60-inch, uh, metal fence that looks like the, the, uh, ornamental fence across the street. It'll be higher.
Five-foot fence.
Yeah. So all fences that, or all retaining walls that are over 48 inches, four feet off the ground, will be, will be that fence. And then we install a one-foot wide, um, rock mulch area so the weeds don't grow into the fence. At the top.
Okay.
And the fences step back a bit from the wall, it's not built on top of the wall.
Right.
Seen similar fences and grates around the River Crossing Loop where there's a pretty significant drop down into the bluff from.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I mean, with the, the main difference being that we create, we're creating this one.
Those are created too, in, in response to the terrain.
So we have one foot space from the fence to the retaining wall?
No, it's three or four feet back. 'Cause you can't, there's, there's GeoGrip fabric in that wall that goes into the hill, you know, pierce that.
Okay.
That structural fabric with the fence.
That helps.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
So it's, it looks tight here, the line with the little circles is where the fences are. It's a four-foot offset from the face of the wall.
And is that the area that will be holding water, or will the water be held to the south?
Well, to be honest, it's gonna be pretty dry.
Mayor, if I could clarify something that I said earlier, because I was taking a closer look when we came off that comment. We were supposed to be talking about the apartment, at that time I perhaps wasn't as prepared. Both basins are infiltration basins.
Okay.
And so in drier weather, they are likely both gonna be dry. Um, so drier, you know, drier periods. In fact, at usually 48 hours that they draw down, um, to dry, uh, that's what the design is.
But it's seeded with a native, uh, Minnesota seed, all throughout the basin. And up to the high-water land. The very last sheet of the plans, there's a seeding plan.
Okay.
That goes into that.
Does this help you feel any better, John, or are you, are you still concerned about it?
I mean, I, just my opinion, it's just, um, that, that's a, that's a heck of a fall. If somebody kids fool around at night, or just like in my neighborhood, which is close to their runaround at night and.
But it's, is it, is it actually like a drop-off, or I kind of picture like a slope?
It's a steep retaining wall.
Oh, okay.
That's how it looks to me on the drawing.
Yeah.
Looks like it's gonna affect four robberies there. Total, unless people are running around in somebody else's backyard, but.
I mean, I get, I get it, I get, I get what you're saying. Is there any thought of doing like a four-foot and then stepping out and go down another four, is that now? Man, I'm sure it's a lot more to deal with that. Madam Mayor, Mr. Council, um, to, um, Councilmember Gilmore's, um, comment. Uh, so the retaining wall isn't necessarily in their backyards, right? So it's in the outlot. Um, and I, and I, John, to John's point, um, you can obviously still get to it if you're walking around back there. So it might be prudent to somehow mark that better, um, rather than with a black fence or something like that, um, so that it shows up better, so kids can possibly see that. Or that might be, have the wrong impression too, that then they can find it better.
Yeah.
We do have retaining walls throughout the city, right? So Landucci put one in that is, um, not 13 feet, but it's about eight feet tall and that's pretty significant. So, um, there are definitely ones in the city that have, do occur.
Yep, yeah, I mean, it's something that's stuck out to me. I, I, maybe the ship has sailed in it, um, we're too far along. And maybe we don't have enough of a consensus to change it, and that's fine too.
Madam Mayor.
How tall is the wall on the school property, which is not far from there?
I don't know off the top of my head.
I'm looking it up now.
I'm, I'm.
Thanks, Stan.
And then Attorney, Attorney Johnson has something.
Yeah, just point of clarification, my understanding is the, they are meeting the code for that retaining wall and that fence. So I understand that there might not be, people might not like it, but remember how our rules work. If our rules say you get to do it, you get to do it, and the way to change that is to change the rules. So I believe, from my understanding, it, uh, is that the, they need code on this particular item. This is not something they are asking for PUD flexibility on.
Hmm.
So our ability to tell them to do it differently doesn't exist.
Okay.
Mayor, the wall on the school property reaches a height of 14 feet.
Hmm.
And that's, uh, and keep, keeping in mind the one that we're asking about on, on the Bay Haven development is actually the wall height is nine. It's the additional depth, and I think you, you know, you're adding the water depth maybe to that. But of course, that's at the bottom of the slope. So the school wall height from toe to top is 14 feet at its highest point.
But they're gonna be on the bottom of that at the school, the wall goes up from the school versus this is, the wall goes down from where they are, so. Um, there isn't much we can do about it other than, um, be aware, right? And make sure those homeowners are aware and, uh, neighbors are aware and all that, but.
I don't know if these homes are, like, going after people with kids anyways, but not to say they won't have anybody with kids there. And I think if a homeowner is concerned, it's in their backyard, then they should just buy a different one. I mean, honestly, I don't.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, sounds like there isn't much we can do about it anyway, so, but it was a good question, just to, yeah, just to find out more, so.
Carl might know something.
Yeah. What do you got, Carl?
We, I, I think we're at a point in the conversation where we still can do more about it, but I don't have an objection to the walls. We haven't, we haven't annexed yet.
Annexed, yeah, we, go annex, we own homes.
Okay.
I mean, city property.
Mayor, just to be clear, so the property has been annexed.
Yeah.
And the preliminary plat was approved that included this design.
Yeah.
So the city has very little flexibility, as Attorney Johnson said, to dictate changes that would involve substantially changing their plans from what's being presented.
Okay.
If I could add something else.
Sure, Len, wanna step closer to the mic just in case? There you go, thanks.
We're working with the slopes.
Yeah.
Around top of the knoll, making it all work. And I might add this, that this is a similar condition to a project that we're now building in North Oaks called Spring, excuse me, Spring Farm, where we had the outer perimeter of this, once again, in sloping grades, were these walls, similar height, where we've incorporated fences. And the point about homeowners, they're gonna make a decision based on the reality of what that is. But because we've just now completed that project, nearing completion, I should say, certain buyers, you know, have elected to build somewhere else, others have said, well, that's fine, you know? And, um, it's a site condition that we've worked with, we've engineered it, built it to code.
Yeah. And, and it was there, and it's, we have a lot that we're looking at as people who aren't trained in looking at all these things, so. Not noticing it before, I, I can see how that would happen.
It wasn't last month that we looked at it.
No, it's true too, it's been months since we.
We've been at, we've been at this for some time.
No, I understand that, but I'm just making it clear that we haven't been at this for a significant amount of time. On our agenda, this has been months since I've looked at this. I realize you're looking at it maybe every day, but I'm certainly not.
Yeah.
I, I, I don't have the concern about the wall, but I do appreciate, I mean, it's that or, or remove more, more trees and.
Yeah.
More houses.
More houses, yeah.
God forbid. Just saying, right?
Well, he has to make money, he's gonna do this, right? Um, I guess I hadn't heard before that the cost to, um, acquire that gap area were also included in his, um, sort of his park dedication fees or whatever. That was new to me.
That was included as part of the preliminary plat request.
It was, okay, I don't remember seeing that.
Included it in the conditions.
Okay. Again, it's been a while and there's a lot, so, okay. Um. Anyone else have any comments, concerns? I mean, I wish that we had a trail along Stagecoach, if this trail's gonna dump out onto Stagecoach, 'cause I already see people walking around that corner and I'm thinking we're gonna get more people, but there's not much we can do about that.
Oh, yeah.
Wait for the county to do theirs, or the regional trail, right?
One thing, I know we had talked about the entrance, what was the final, like, they were gonna make you do a giant roundabout or something?
Yeah, that's, that's down the road.
That's down the road.
That was, it's, they intended that, you know, they're gonna need a roundabout at some point, so they wanted to be sure that there was right-of-way to accommodate that with the plat, so that's where Pratt Construction.
So there's enough room on that entry that.
To show how it will fit with the land they're dedicating.
Okay.
And then to the trail, there's gonna need to be an agreement between the city and county saying, there is a plan for a regional trail along Stagecoach, but because of the slopes and the stormwater, you know, where does that trail get located and how does it get paid for?
Yeah. And there's, um, also still some outstanding things with Baytown Township about the road, is that correct? Like, do we, have they given over, you know, that road is a shared road right now? Because we did not annex the property directly south of what is now called First Avenue North.
So the city's provided an agreement saying this street will be constructed by the developer to city specifications, the city will maintain it. The city attorney's office is talking with Baytown Township's attorney about getting that agreement finalized.
Yeah.
Obviously, that has to be done before the street can be improved.
Yeah, okay. Just so everybody's clear on all that.
So I guess I have one more question about that area that, you know, we don't know who owns it, you know?
The gap area?
Yeah, the gap area. So it's gonna be. Yeah, the gap area. So it's going to be, they're owning it. Pratt is going to own it, right? The developer is going to own it?
Oh, I thought we were getting it, the city.
That's what I thought too.
Yeah. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hill, Jake Stein with Larkin Hoffman, legal counsel for Pratt Homes. So that is, that is, as a refresher, that gap parcel has not been in the records for a hundred and fifty years. So there was a, an erroneous transfer a hundred and fifty years ago. The only folks that could ultimately bring a claim for any would be adjacent property owner. We are working through the process there. It's likely going to be split. We've been working with staff very closely on figuring out where that property line is going to be. We will be back for the council to formally request allocation of that. But the anticipation is that there will be some city-owned land that will allow for a trail as is currently proposed and that'll be part of it. And Mayor, to your question earlier about that, the idea is that, you know, ultimately by going through the quiet title action, it'll acquire about, you know, a fairly significant portion of land, piece of which will be designated for the city. So rather than acquiring it by free title, we're just going through the legal process to quiet title on that. So that's, that's the thinking there. And it's going to provide, as you see here, kind of an exciting opportunity to make that connection to the park back there.
So the intent is to divide that gap area between Pratt, who is potentially going to be buying the Nass property right there, and then the city on the south side?
I've been working with Mr. Nass.
Yes.
He's in, you know, Baytown Township. I've been to the Baytown Township board meeting and explained that we're working together with Chris. Chris and Pratt Homes have come to an agreement, verbal.
It's Chris Nass, just for the record?
Yeah. Just so you know. So I know all the history.
Okay.
And in order to make his property work, we're going to need that gap property to make it work. He's got an adjoining piece of land that he'll be signing on that gap application, as will the Otto's. They're the two property owners. And it's going to be a process and we're undertaking it now.
Okay. So, so your intent is to acquire that whole gap area so you can make improvements to that?
Yes, we're going to put that trail through it.
Well, for the trail, but also to develop.
Yes.
Eventually, another phase.
Yeah, to make the Nass property work.
Okay. So I'm not.
Little clarification there. So there will still be a portion up by the Otto's and the Thompsons where the trail goes that will be designated as city property.
Right, to the east side of this whole.
But farther to the west there, it's likely, if the purchase agreement or however that works goes through, their interest in that property, given that it backs up to Inspiration, that Inspiration probably doesn't need more property to take care of. And it's situated off in a area that the city of Bayport for their parks wouldn't be able to utilize it very well. I think we could get behind what they are proposing. So they will come back with that proposal at some point.
Can you help me understand the financial part of it? Because the park dedication fees are being reduced because of the trail costs. And it sounded like the gap area legal, all these fees are also going to be part, like taken, can you explain how that's actually going to work?
Ms. Johnson can explain.
Okay.
Hi, I can explain. So there is, for parkland dedication, I think it's important to go back to the, our authority for why we get to collect parkland dedication. And that is something that comes through a statute when we subdivide. So we can only get parkland dedication when we do some sort of subdivision of property and essentially make the use more intense in a nutshell. And so in this situation, we have the apartments, which are obviously creating a lot of density on a small area. And then we have the villas. And the parkland dedication for the villas is really the most expensive portion of the parkland dedication because of that per unit cost at $2,000 per unit. And there's seventy in the, in the apartment building versus the villas.
You said the villas were the more expensive part, but you mean the other way around?
No, because there's more villas than there are.
No, there's only thirty.
Yes, you're right. I said up, the apartments are more expensive than the villas. Yep, like half, right? A little less than half. So the way that we set it up was that the apartment is going to pay for the apartment portion, right, of the parkland dedication, even though technically what we're approving of theirs isn't a subdivision. The subdivision is coming in under the final plat. So everything is sort of coming in under Mr. Pratt and that component. But we recognize that it really should be allocated to the apartments. But our authority is the plat. So it's, I think it's important to understand that that is, a hundred and forty thousand is what we are collecting on the apartments. The rest that we are collecting on the villas, that is, we are collecting essentially, instead of cash that they would be paying to us, they are going to be paying for things that they wouldn't have otherwise had to pay for. So they are going to pay for the quiet title action, which is approximately $30,000. They are going to be paying about, not about, they are paying $50,000 for buckthorn removal. And they are also paying for the installation of the trail. I do not know how much the cost of the installation of the trail is, but I can assure you that from a math perspective, the city is coming out ahead on what we would be collecting on the villas portion if we were just running our $2,000 per home, which would be thirty some units or whatever, it's thirty something units times 2,000 dollars.
Yeah.
We're way over that.
So, okay. Thanks for clarifying that.
What I'm saying is, this is a good deal for the city. And what it also allowed is, it didn't allow there to be a lot of kind of back end math that had to happen.
Yeah.
And we don't have to worry about figuring out, settling up on various things later on.
Yeah. And I see Leanna was in agreement as well, that she thought that made sense.
Yeah, so that, this was, yes, I understand that maybe this wasn't completely fleshed out at the preliminary plat. I totally understand that, but it has been fleshed out since then.
Okay.
And is very strongly articulated in the development agreement.
Okay. Gotcha.
Seen in lieu of park dedication fees often through the whole process.
Yes, yes. All right. I appreciate that clarification. Other questions?
I mean, what sorts of things, you know, everybody, everybody here with the, sort of the exception of us sitting up here, you know, you guys all make livings doing these things. So what sort of things are within our purview here? Because we've sort of been stonewalled a little bit. And I am not, I want to make a very clear point. I'm not against development. I'm a blue collar worker. I'm an electrician. I've made my, I've made a lot of money and made my living and supported my family with construction projects. I understand how they work and people have to make money. But I also know that, that codes are bare minimums. And we, we're always welcome to go over and above what code is. And so, you know, maybe one less house would have made for less of a dramatic infiltration basin. But I'm in no way against this project. I want to make that very clear.
Okay.
But in terms of my question about what is within our purview this evening, you know, to.
I think maybe a good thing to look at would be the water conservation. So again, maybe taking back, going back a step. They are coming in as a PUD, which is they're asking for flexibility, right, to do things differently than what the code allows them to do. And so in exchange for that flexibility, there needs to be a public benefit, right, or trading. And there, and so in this situation, something that staff has worked incredibly hard on is the water conservation components and, and really beefing those up and building those out so that they're not just sort of platitudes in the documents, but they're actually things that will make a difference. Not that you necessarily need to edit any of those per se, but I, I'm highlighting that because I think it's good for the council to know that there was a lot on the, in the background with city staff putting them through a lot of paces and, and making the developer put things in that they maybe, not maybe, I know, they would not have done absent those requirements from city staff. And so if, if what you're maybe asking for is what have we gotten in exchange for this flexibility that we've given them, I would defer to Matt to weigh in additionally, but water conservation is definitely going to be a significant area.
Thank you for that. It's helpful.
Mayor, to the timing of it, where the council has the most discretion to require changes such as, we want to see this ponding area revised so that it may lose some lots. Well, that's at the preliminary.
Right. This is kind of late in the day for that.
You're telling the developer, these are the parameters you have. So we had conditions in there saying, okay, this is acceptable. We need irrigation measures. We need the trail provided for.
Right.
And then the steps between preliminary plat and tonight is getting to those details. So the only thing that's outlined in the development contract or PUD permit regarding the irrigation. And then the final design details, which then identify this retaining wall.
Yeah. Yeah. And it is difficult because this isn't our job to read these things. I mean, I know it's our job to read these things because we're around the council, but like to understand all these maps and all the, like I had no clue after the school was being built that there's going to be this huge slope on the south side of that school, because I don't know how to read those contour maps, you know? But I did like try to take a closer look at like the landscape plan thing and I saw like what kind of turf that was being put in. And I looked it up and it was like minimal water usage and maintenance for that kind of turf. And I'm like, okay, that's great. So I know you guys worked hard, because we did say that, like at preliminary plat, we're like, it's important to us to conserve water. So then that was on city staff to make sure that happened. But then we don't know what those final outcomes are, because it's hard for us to decipher everything. So it's nice for you to reiterate that for us, that, yeah, we did get them to do some of those things that they may not have, would not have done if we didn't ask them to, so.
Madam Mayor, I will say that if, if there is anything in here that we still had concerns about, we probably wouldn't be at this meeting right now.
Right, you guys would have kept working on.
So some of those things that like John indicates, right, that, that are, that are up to code, even though, yes, they're tall and different things like that and could be dangerous. Some of that minor stuff, staff probably just glances at and is like, oh, you know, that's being built per city code. It's good to go, right? We don't get into some of those details that maybe you guys would be potentially concerned about. That's for the next development, I guess.
Yeah. And maybe in other communities, they don't get this into it, but this is a big deal for us. We don't, this is like the only time we're going to have this chance to.
We don't do much development here.
No, we don't, so.
And, and we've been burned.
We have. Yeah, you're right. You're right. So we just want to make sure, yeah, everybody. Yeah. So, okay.
Move to adopt a resolution approving the final plat for the Bay Haven and Bayport development, including new construction of thirty-five single-family villa lots and one lot for multiple family use. Bended by Pratt Homes, subject to the conditions listed in the staff report, and authorizing staff to work with the city attorney to finalize the PUD permit, development agreement, and other documents related to the overall development.
Wonderful. Thank you, Carl. Thanks, Ethan. Roll call.
Councilmember Dahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore.
Aye.
Councilmember Bliss.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Mayor Hanson.
Aye. Ta-da.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you for all of your patience with our questions and concerns and everything you've worked with the city on. I know it's been a long process and it's still, there's still some other loose ends that you gotta tie up, but appreciate it. And I appreciate all your attention to detail, John, and everybody else, so, and Dan, so. All right, we've accomplished it. Next is maybe time for everybody to leave? And then we'll move on to the next item so that we're not disruptive. Not you, Carl, you gotta stay.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks a lot. And Jan already left, so.
Thank you.
Thanks. That was Jan Anderson was sitting there. Yeah, I don't know who is sitting next to Jan though. Yeah. All right. So we're going to move on to our city council liaison reports. Should we start with Katie?
Sure.
Okay.
I had BKEL. BKEL, they're in full force for Derby Days. So I'll just go over maybe a little bit of their schedule for Derby Days. It'll be Friday, September nineteenth, and Saturday, September twentieth. It's, the party in the park is on Friday. That's going to be at Pearl Park. Music starts at six and the music is Good For Gary. And then Saturday, the medallion hunt. Clues are given out starting at nine o'clock. And then it's every hour until found. There's going to be the duck sales and then the Derby is, the duck Derby at noon. Pep parades at two. And then down at Lakeside at three to five, we'll have the vintage baseball. Food and beer will be down there, music, and the fireworks.
Yeah. And I heard lots of fun activities at the duck races too. Like the library's got music coming in and some other things. So it's going to be a fun weekend as always.
Yeah, library and Roxy waffles will be there.
Excited.
And then I had planning commission today at five that we just approved.
Awesome.
I don't know if I need to redo that. There was no public, yeah, no public, nobody talked at it. So it was ten minutes long.
That was that multiple, high-density thing. So I ordered a T-shirt. When, when are those going to show up?
I don't know.
Okay, because I want to wear it, advertise Derby Days, right?
Yeah, it's a good question. I'll let you know.
Thanks. All right, John, did water, did you have a watershed meeting or is that?
Middle St. Crey watershed management organization did not meet last month, but Councilmember Bliss and I attended a workshop on the water, which is put on by Liz Angie Hung.
Oh, my God.
East Metro something, something.
Wild Rivers.
MRep.
No, she's not Wild Rivers. She's MRep. East Metro something, something.
So.
Water education.
And Carl can feel free to jump in. It was only my second time attending. Mayor and I having attended previously. It was a gorgeous night to be on the water in Taylor's Falls or outside of Taylor's Falls, I guess. But a great program. Just, we did, what was it? Speed Day? Is that what it was called? Speed Dating or whatever, where you went?
Networking, probably.
Was it five or six stations we went to and had the mini presentations in small groups? And one of the things which I have not forwarded to Matt yet is, one of the presentations was about some signage about our boundaries for people that have to work within the, the specific laws and ordinance related to being near the river. And they have come up with some, one of the organizations has come up with some pretty cool signage that we could put up in town. It seemed reasonable to me. I have a picture of them. I could forward the information to Matt. And so you sort of know, when you're in there, you're going to pass it in your vehicle or if you're walking, that I am now within.
Scenic route.
The area that is going to.
I see. So just designating, now I'm in that part that has more rules to follow because they're so close to the river.
I don't read, yes. I don't remember the original municipality. Was it St. Crey Beach, maybe?
Yeah, or Afton.
Might have been Afton.
Okay. So you'll send that sign date to Matt?
Forward that information to Matt, because I think it makes sense for Bayport as well.
And there's also at least one or two good takeaways, I think, when we do those workshops on water.
And a much different cross-section of other city officials. I mean, it was Shisago, Lindstrom people. I.
St. Crey Falls.
I knew, I expected to know a lot more people and I knew virtually no one other than Bethany Cox, our county commissioner, was there. So we visited with her quite a bit.
Okay, great. Thanks for going. And hopefully when you get to Carl, he'll tell us.
To you other guy, to the rest of the council. It's, it's a good time.
It is. And Angie, they're very smart. Angie and Barbara are very, yeah, and you get to have a drink on the road.
Yep.
You have to pay for that yourself.
Yep.
Taxpayers are not buying.
Paid for my own.
Okay. Ethan, cable commission.
Still haven't met. A little update, they've, well, all their stuff was damaged so badly. They're still working on getting some of that back. They just, I think it was the twentieth, maybe of July, so. they're still working on getting some of that back. They just, I think it was the twentieth, maybe, of July, so they were allowed back into the building, but they're still, yeah, I haven't heard anything new since then.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Carl.
We come to Airport Advisory Commission meets in a couple weeks. We haven't met since our last council meeting. It's kind of quarterly.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, I had a chance to go with Councilmember Dahl to the event. Good reminders of simple actions we can take to keep a pretty precious resource precious.
Mm-hmm. Great, I'm glad you were, thanks. Um, let's see, I had the library board meeting on the fifteenth of July, and there's really nothing to add. She gives us a pretty detailed memo in our packets. Um, we talked a lot about, um, the salary, um, situation, and that's a lot of the impetus for why we're doing that salary rate, um, study. Um, I went to the Lumberjack Days Parade and helped out and helped mark the, where they line up. I checked in participants, and then I actually marched in the parade for the chamber, and I have to tell you, one of the most fun things was when this kid yells out, "Mom, that's my mayor!", pointing at me, and here I am in Stillwater, so anyways, that was really cute. Um, I did storytime with the mayor at the farmer's market. Again, thank you to Pony Preschool for coming, because I don't think I would have had any kids I was reading to show up, but that was really fun. We had a beautiful day for that. Um, Chamber Ambassador meeting, um, again, just trying to stay connected to the chamber, making sure that they remember that Bayport is here. Um, I met with the Community Engagement Director at Community Thread. The, you might know it as the Bayport Senior Center in the White Pine Building. Again, just to find out what, what's going on and what direction they're going, because they have that, a new director, director, executive director. Um, and it sounds like they have, um, some ideas for how they're changing their membership program, but my main goal there is to make sure that our community is aware that there is a senior center and that there's activities there, and how we can engage them, so hope to work with her more closely on that. Um, similarly, met with Lori Schaefer. She's the new Marketing and Communications Director at the St. Crye Valley Foundation, um, which is sort of like the mothership of all of these individual, like the Stillwater Area Foundation is underneath that umbrella. And her whole job, they hired her just to look at how to better communicate. So, she gave me an update on this, their, um, strategic communications planning process that they're going through. And ultimately, the goal there is to encourage people to consider Bayport in their philanthropy, their estate planning, whatever. So, we're gonna be working together to make sure, again, Bayport's top of mind for that. Um, and then I was at Night to Unite. I think I saw Carl was there, and Matt even came. So, that was fun. Thank you, PD. I'm sure you'll give us a little bit more about that, but you did a great job. It was a beautiful night. It was very fun. And then one last thing, last time I gave that shout-out to Olio and Manger for being in the paper. And now Sun's Deli. I know, Sun's Deli, um, was in there for the Pork Boy Sandwich. They were in the Star Tribune. Um, the article was the five best things that the food writers ate that week, and the pork belly sandwich was featured. So, we are really getting on the map with our restaurants around here, so I just wound up...
And may I add that columnist is a former Bayport resident.
I heard that after, yeah, so...
Bayport Elementary with her brother.
Yeah, so anyway, so it's just, it's just very exciting what's happening here in our city. We should all be very proud.
Got good food.
We definitely have good food.
I think five of the best things I ate last week were from...
From Sun's Deli.
Only five?
All five of them.
Remember, he hasn't had a kitchen, so he's getting, getting closer, though. All right, Matt, you want to do some staff reports?
Yep, uh, Chief Isinger is on vacation, uh, this week, um, so we'll start with Chief Jackson.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, um, we're starting to wrap up all of our summer activities, so thankfully, uh, it's gonna slow down a little bit here for us. Um, Nineteen Night was a huge success. Uh, final count was that we went through four hundred hot dogs, so significantly higher than last year, so we had a real good showing. Um, special thank you again to Brittany and to Mary Gulette, helped, um, with all of our fundraising efforts this year. We probably had more raffle drawings and prizes this year than we have had, so that was really fun to see and a really good event, so glad everyone was able to come.
The best part of the raffle drawing was when Gary the Flag Guy won, and everybody cheered, all the kids and everything.
Everyone loved it.
Yes, so...
Yeah, no, that was great, man.
Yeah.
Uh, all in all, it was a very successful event for us, and so hopefully, uh, next year we'll, uh, take tart some of the things that worked and tweak some things, so we get some new things out there, so. Um, now we're kind of moving into our planning stages for Halloween, so hopefully we'll still have the event at the old fire hall. Um, we'll have plans to be announced coming up in the future. Otherwise, the, um, Six Hundred Club Picnic BBQ we're attending on the twenty-third, and September eleventh, the Bash at the Bank, um, Officer Cornell and Mays will be out there for that. Um, they've kind of made it their annual event out there with the bank, so. And then also the Big Truck Event in Stillwater, they'll be attending as well, so I will stand for any questions. Thank you.
Hot dogs were the sixth best thing I ate.
This is the hot dogs? Thanks, thank, thank you, Woody's for doing that, the hot dogs. All right.
All right, um, New Public Works Director, Joe Hanson.
Your first, uh, speaking to the council time. Woo-hoo, welcome.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. Uh, update for Public Works, Collins Electric completed their, uh, power pole or streetlight installations down there on Fifth, uh, and one in front of the new library. Um, got great feedback from the community on that. Uh, they really liked the way they look. Um, city staff has also been working on, uh, the Three-N Priority Grant, uh, for the new boat launch. Um, since the, uh, city's letter of intent was accepted, um, we are now working with Washington County Conservation District, the Department of Natural Resources, and the MPCA Minnesota Pollution Control Agency to complete our, um, application for the new boat launch down there. Um, additionally, the sixty percent plans have been completed for the safe routes to school, um, up by the new elementary school, um, with construction anticipated to start spring of next year. Um, Wolf River has most of the materials delivered to the fire station or the solar array that's going in up there, and we're working with a contractor to do, uh, the landscape in the area to make it a no-mow, um, underneath those, so, uh, we won't have to maintain that.
Great. Is, uh, are you, have you been wrapped into the walkability study yet? He wasn't copied on that email. Okay, so we did hear that they need a little bit of an extension. Our deliverable was supposed to be coming soon from them, but, uh, we're gonna probably see that in September, they said, end of August, but, so, anyways. You don't have to worry about that. Matt and I...
Not yet.
Not yet.
Matt has been more than willing to share his work that he's been doing, so.
Yeah, good, that's awesome, and it's nice you could just hit the ground running.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. It seems like it's been very smooth, and I hope that you're enjoying it so far.
I, I am. It's a great pe, bunch of people here that I'm working with, my staff, all the city hall staff, so.
Great.
Um, it's been a great experience in my short time here so far, and hope to just build on that.
Great. He got a surprise visit from the mayor one day, and he asked, is this common? Is she gonna just show up?
The time.
I was on my walk, I was walking by, and I'm like, oh, I should go say hi to Joe, greet him on his second day or whatever it was, but, yeah.
So that completes my update, if there's any questions.
Thanks, yeah.
Welcome.
Thank you, welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
He also already figured out that Mary is who you need to talk to to get stuff done.
She's gotta be your BFF.
Oh, yeah.
For networking, just, you need to know Mary.
You need to know Mary. Gulette, we're talking about, yeah, okay.
Assistant Administrator Taylor.
And Mayor, members of the council. Uh, the next Planning Commission meeting has been scheduled for September third at five PM, which is a Wednesday, and it's quite unusual, but we're having difficulty finding a forum and being able to coordinate consultants and different staff, so...
But you did it, yay!
We did, yeah. It was, in my report in the packet, we mentioned August twenty-fifth, but that's been now rescheduled for September third. Um, and we're gonna review two conditional use permit applications. The first application was presented to the city council at the August fourth workshop in concept form, which is to allow a second use on the property as an interim use on five-ten Pearl Creek Drive, and that's formerly Siegfried Construction. And the second application is to allow a cannabis micro-business right across the street at two forty-three Third Street North, which is the Heartfelt Silks Building. Uh, both applications are anticipated to be considered by the city council then following the next week on September eighth. So the process will move pretty quickly if approved by the Planning Commission. Um, Joe covered the grant, um, application for the Clean Water Land and Legacy Property, and our, we completed a site visit, Matt, Joe, and I, to just help decide which of the three grant categories best suits the city's visions for next steps for that property. Um, and then I'm also gearing up for the next edition of the city newsletter, which will go out in September. Um, just note that city hall, or most city offices, will be closed on September first, which is Labor Day. And then the city council meeting has been pushed to September eighth. We're gonna have a workshop at four, and then followed by the regular meeting at six. And then, as I mentioned, too, the September third Planning Commissioning at five. That's all for now. I stand for questions, and now I guess all the other stuff that was on the agenda previously, we've been working on.
Yeah, you guys have been very busy. Vikings play September eighth at seven-thirty. Do you think we can...
Get out at night? Yeah, I think so.
We're on the deadline.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna, can you put the times up for that meeting? We only get so much time on each day.
You're gonna be gone on the eighth?
Yeah, well now...
Now you are. Oh, because of the Vikings! I was like, what? Oh, you're funny. Okay, one last report.
All right, Madam Mayor, um, just a couple of things of note. The second quarter was our first time doing stormwater charges. Mary did a great job on, uh, um, getting that ramped up and getting it ready, and we only had a couple inquiries, so, um, I'm gonna assume that it was our education that we provided earlier throughout the year that, uh...
That's it.
That was a result of that. Um, fire chief position, we're still going through some background check. We have a significant amount of it to work through. Um, and we will probably have a recommendation, um, well, we already have a recommendation that you hire him, but from a background check standpoint. Um, uh, the Stillwater Prison closure, we've touched base with DOC staff on the decommissioning study. There's two portions of that study that we're really interested in. Not that we're not interested in all of it, but, um, the two things would be the land that the current fire hall sits on, um, because that was essentially somewhat loaned to us. Um, and the, um, the water treatment plant that currently exists on the property as an alternate for, um, our current system.
They have water treatment there, not just a well? Is that...
Correct. Yeah, they have, they, they actually have a, a water softening. So they go above and beyond what we have, so they drilled into the Mount Simon aquifer, which is very limited to drill into, so they have iron and manganese removal, um, and then also a softening plant.
Hmm.
Their water is likely, dare I say, better than our water.
Hmm, but then they were having protests over the water quality.
Only because of what it goes through after it comes out of that treatment plant, so.
Right.
Um, also working through the budget, um, I can, they say for fairly cer, certain that, um, we will make that less than ten percent number based on what I present you originally, so. Um, although that might, given the timelines on the meetings and stuff like that, um, it, it might be that we're gonna have to maybe have another me, quick meeting in September, um, after that September eighth meeting. So, um, the county is due to have our preliminary budget, uh, September twenty-ninth, I believe, so.
Okay. Great. Anyone have questions or comments for Matt? Any other council items or announcements? Any motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn the meeting.
Thanks, Katie.
Second.
Thanks, John, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Guys.